Good afternoon and welcome to our first meeting in August. I'd like to welcome those of you in our council chambers and those of you in our, on our Electric City Television. Our invocation tonight will be led by myself and respects to flags will be given by Councilmember Don Chapman. Please rise.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings and opportunities that you bestowed upon our community. We ask that you bless our city. We ask that you give guidance to our council as we make policymaking decisions that affect not only the citizens of Anderson, but also our surrounding community. We ask that you keep our public safety, members of our team, safe and away from harm. And more importantly, Lord, we, we ask you to bless all our citizens and to make it a, make it possible that we reach out to each other and that we understand and that we care for each other and that we understand the differences that we all bring to the table. And, and just because we're different from one another doesn't mean that we're inferior. And we, we, we ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of our July the 25th meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing any, do I have a motion to approve?
No move.
First by Mr. Buck Roberts, and second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes of July 25th passed unanimously. We have one item of old business and that item is to request the second and third reading of ordinance 16-15 to rezone 1303 North Murray Avenue from R M 10 multifamily residential to N C neighborhood commercial. Ms. McConnell.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this piece of property is on North Murray Avenue. It's close to the city recreation center. It formerly housed the credit union operation and was operating as a non-conforming use. Over the past few years, we have rezoned surrounding properties, including our own rec center, so that they would be in zoning compliance. And because we do have commercial zoning already in this area, certainly it's appropriate to change this classification from multifamily to N C neighborhood commercial. There have been no additional questions, comments, or concerns from the public. The planning commission did hear this request in July at their meeting and unanimously recommended approval. With hearing no other public comments or concerns, the staff recommends moving forward with second reading.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't think we had a lot of questions in our July meeting. Any additional questions, comments?
Do we know what's potentially going here?
We do not know at this time.
Anything else, guys?
We pass this ordinance on second reading.
First by Dr. Thompson, and second by Mr. John Roberts. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It passes unanimously on the second reading.
Make a motion, we accept it on the third and final.
Well, first by Mr. Chapman, and second by Mr. Buck Roberts. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It passes unanimously on the third and final reading. We have one item of new business. That item is to request consideration of purchase two tractors for the Public Works Division. Ms. McConnell.
Normally, as you know, we will bring a complete list of recommended purchases, capital improvements, based upon the capital equipment fee. That is getting our capital equipment in place. And you will remember that several months ago, we are, we purchased garbage trucks and we also purchased equipment for the sanitation department. If you know, we have four routes, both on sanitation end and on the trash end. And each trash route has one tractor loader and two trucks that have flat beds and trailers with those. So essentially, the request that's before you tonight would be to purchase two tractors that will give us the ability to have your garbage route and your trash route. Everything that gets serviced on those days will be with new equipment. We're bringing these two tractors to you separate from your whole list of capital equipment purchases because we're taking advantage of the state vendor, which is Old Stone Tractor. They advised the staff that there was an eight percent increase, price increase that was slated. If the, and if we ordered the tractors before August the 26th, they could honor the former price that we paid for the first two tractors. If we waited until after the price increase, we'd be paying $9,500 more. So we, we felt like we'd really like to take advantage of that opportunity for those savings. If you approve this, then we would take our old 2000 Case tractor and our 2004 Case tractor and we would put those at auction and sell them through our govdeals.com. So again, these tractors are certainly would assist the trash crews daily in their routes as they remove debris from our streets and would allow the, all four trash routes to have that state-of-the-art equipment. The total for those two tractors is $119,714. And again, that is to the state vendor under the state contract, Old Stone Tractor. And the staff would recommend the purchase, the approval of that purchase.
Thank you.
Carrie is here if you have any other specific questions about this equipment.
Open it up, Ms. Chapman.
The, the sale of the, of the two older tractors, will those, the proceeds from those sales, will those go back into the same account in which this money is coming out of?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
We do.
So we have that money budgeted already in Public Works?
Yes, ma'am. You know, your, your five dollar capital equipment fee is what is funding your capital equipment purchases. So we, we have almost $800,000 that we approved in the budget for capital equipment purchases. And this is on a recurring basis. So it, you will, will remember that what we've done in the past is we break those purchases down. Really, I think generally, we have two lists of, of equipment. And Carrie is in charge of helping look at our fleet of equipment, determine what kind of mileage, what kind of repairs, what type of work all of our various equipment is involved in, and helping to prioritize those needs along with the division heads so that we bring a list back to you that, you know, makes good sense in terms of, we can't buy everything at once, but we can certainly put that in priority.
Good question, Ms. Harbin.
The two tractors that are going offline are the 2000 and 2004. Do we anticipate, one got 12 years out of, I guess, one out 16 years. What is the life expectancy of, of the tractors? And then secondly, what's the, I'm gonna make you come down there, Carrie. And then secondly, what is, what's the life expectancy of it? And when's the delivery date? I mean, are they in stock or is this something?
Delivery date's gonna be around November or December, possibly January.
Could be, it's gonna be a while.
But if we get them ordered before that date, they'll honor the price of the last two we just got in June.
So it's not something they have in inventory?
No, sir. And realistically, the way we use them, life expectancy is probably five to seven years. Then it comes very expensive keeping them up.
I mean, obviously, how you get that much out of them? I mean, the 2000, I think I don't know which one the 2000 is, because I see it. And it, you know, needs a little.
That's the one with the doors and windows open and the guy wiping the sweat.
That's the one. Yeah, that's the one. Yeah, that's the one. You know, with that, ma'am, I'd make a motion to approve this.
I second. Well, first by Mr. Harbin, and second by Mr. Lockridge. Further discussion?
The only thing I was gonna mention is typically this equipment is delivered to a site, stays on-site, where these things are driven like cars.
That's right.
All around town. That's what wears them out probably more than anything.
That's hard.
Yeah.
And the constant stopping, turning, loading? Yes, sir.
I was gonna say, after the shape that they're in, who in the world's gonna buy these old tractors?
Never had any trouble selling anything on Gov Deal so far. Lot of times, we think we're gonna get a lot for something and get very little. Sometimes we think it's worthless and we get more money than we thought.
Any estimate on the value of either one of them?
I would, I would say five to $7,000 maybe.
Do we have any backups?
Yes.
We do?
Yes, we'll still have two.
Okay.
Spares. And we'll take the best tires and any equipment on them, keep that on the spares before we sell them.
Yes, sir.
Good. Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Passed this unanimously. Administrative briefing, Ms. McConnell.
The, this coming Thursday, we have the Anderson County Municipal Association meeting at 7:00 PM. This is being hosted by the City of Anderson. And it will be held at our eMERGE at the, at the garage. Also, we have a recreation committee, committee meeting on Thursday of next week, the 18th, at noon at the recreation center. Let me back up to Tuesday, the 16th. Seat two, Councilman Chapman's Neighborhood Watch meeting is at 6:00 PM at Fire Station 3. And movie night in Carolina Renn Park. As you might remember, we got rained out the other week. So Zootopia will be shown at 8:20 at Carolina Renn Park on Friday, the 19th. And that brings us up to your next council meeting in August, which is the 22nd. And the 25th is the Concerned Citizens of the East Side meeting at 5:00 PM at Hope Baptist Church.
Are we having downtown signs?
The Black Party is every, is still on Thursday nights.
Okay, so it's, yeah, I can see it listed, so.
I think there's, I think there's three more.
Three left, I believe.
Yeah.
Yes.
Also, what was omitted off of the calendar is on Saturday, August the 20th, the Southeast Anderson Community Task Force is having their 10th Annual Back to School Festival over the Greeley Park, where they'll be giving away book bags and school supplies and be a lot of food and vendors there. So it's from 4:00 to 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
The police department will be there doing kids IDs and fire department will be there with the smokehouse. Usually, there are about 250 people in attendance.
Oh, more? Lot of people? Anything else? Carolyn Phillips? Well, good. I think we have an executive session. You wanna go through that?
We have two matters in executive session that we'd like to discuss. One is a contractual matter concerning possible disposition of property. The second is legal advice and possible litigation.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to go on executive session.
No move.
First by Mr. Ross.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chapman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We stay in executive session.